Okay, good afternoon, Terri.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you so very much for accepting our invitation for this interview.
Thank you.
Los Altos Residence is an organization of your neighbors who care deeply about the city and whose mission is to ensure that every resident's voice is heard by the city council, the commissions, and the city staff. We're very pleased to get this opportunity to get you know you better and to learn more about why you're running for city council. I just want to spend a minute going over the ground rules of these interviews. All of the questions were sent to each candidate prior to the interview, and each candidate will be asked the same questions. We will post unedited versions of this videos on our website, losaltosresidence.org. Our goal is to help voters learn more about all of the candidates through this series of interviews because we're living through challenging times due to the COVID shelter in place and traditional in-person debates and small neighborhood gatherings are discouraged.
Yes.
I just want to note that all seven candidates were invited and all seven candidates accepted invitation to be interviewed. However, after receiving the questions, Sally Meadows and Jonathan Weinberg withdrew their acceptance and notified us they do not want to be interviewed. So, yeah.
Whatever.
Before the first question, we'd like to give you a few minutes to just introduce yourself and have a few minutes to introduce yourself to the voters in Los Altos.
So I'm Terri Courtois. As pretty much everyone knows, I've been a real estate agent for 31 years in Los Altos. Prior to that, I had a number of managerial jobs and had a lot of managerial classes and training courses, et cetera, and through all those, I decided that I wanted to head into a different path. I've always been interested in real estate, and so that's how I got into real estate. I'm currently on the value hearings board at Santa Clara County, which I go in front of the assessors office and applicants when they're trying to reduce their property taxes from 2001 until 2000, sorry, yeah, 2010 to 2014. I was appointed Santa Clara County Planning Department, and I served at the will of the commissioners. And when my commissioner retired, the new commissioner decided he wanted someone else. It was a big battle, but I got thankfully off because it was during the huge Lehigh Quarry stuff, and that was very contentious and a lot of hard work, and I really enjoyed it. But, you know, there were a lot of people that were very, very angry with everybody. It didn't matter which side you were on. So we've raised two kids. I have two grandkids. I love Los Altos, and the reason that I've decided to be on planning the city council is because I believe that the community is very, very important to us. And I believe the feel of Los Altos is very important. I've seen that from all the people that move here. And I really want to make sure that all the community members are involved. I've seen lots of fractions, special interests have says that, I mean, if you look at the chart, it's community first, and then underneath that is city council, and then underneath that is all the staff. So it's community first.
Wonderful. Well, let me answer the first question. In your role as a resident, what do you think is your most significant contributions to our community?
Helping the property tax basis. You know, I'm a big gardener, so I do a lot of gardening. I help lots of my neighbors with things that they need done with their houses. I help all my clients with that. I help people that aren't even my clients with things like that. But if you would look at how many houses I've sold and how much money that then gets into the coffers to help the community, I thought probably what everybody would look at as far as a Realtor. I've worked a lot. I mean, in the past, pretty much 24/7 real estate, every single day of the week. So I don't really need to work anymore, and I feel like I could give back more than I already do, and this seems like a good avenue for me to do it.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, what are your priorities and what will you do to make sure they're accomplished?
I think the biggest priority is somehow, and I think the council is doing a pretty good job, but they really need to get everybody in the community involved. They need to make sure that there's some way that the community can talk to us because it goes from them to us, then to the staff, so that any questions, concerns, surveys, all that kind of thing. So when things come up that are important to the community, we know about it. The one I think of that seemed to get out of hand that the community didn't even know about was the G5, and they came up in arms about it, and it seems like they should have known what was happening before it was happening. And I don't know how exactly we can fix that, but, you know, the internet is a pretty good thing, and I think there's ways to do that.
Okay. Let's move to finance. When financial demands of Los Altos exceed the available and projected public funds, what factors will you consider in allocating the funds to competing demand?
Well, the most important in every client that I have is the safety of their family and the safety of their investment. So those would be the most important things to concentrate on. And from there, it would be what the community feels is the most important. So if the community at large feels that, say, safety is the most important, that's where we concentrate. I know there's a lot of things that need to be done. We need to always have the roads up and running. We need to make sure the sewers are running. We need to make sure that, you know, the police are available. We need to make sure that all the systems that happen in Los Altos are working. So those are the most important things. And then the subclerious things, you know, there's always those would, if, you know, if we should have a recession, which we will sooner or later, we're going to have to cut somewhere. I know that you can vote on fees, but I don't think we should do any of that without community support.
Okay. So there are financial instruments available for cities to raise funds without voter approval, without prior voter approval. What is your position on having Los Altos use this type of financing? And would you, if you would vote for it, what?
I'm not, I'm not for it. If the community's not for it, I'm not for it.
Okay. Are there any instances where you feel it might be appropriate?
Well, yeah, if we had a big fire and we needed to borrow money to help the residents fight the fire, yes. Or there's a big earthquake and we need to, say, get the traffic signals up, get the cell phone coverage back up, you know, those kinds of things, I think, emergency kinds of things, if we can't get it from the state or the feds.
Okay. So let's go to local zoning and development. Do you believe the current building codes for the various zones, commercial, residential, mixed commercial neighborhood, especially those related to building height and density, are appropriate for Los Altos?
Yes. I think the El Camino Corridor can support taller buildings, and there's rules about how high, et cetera, and also the downtown corridor can sort, can support multi-units. I know in Los Altos now, we have the ADU rules and regulations that seem to be changing, and those can support, you know, one affordable little unit in the back. I'm not in favor of changing the R1 at all. I think the R1 should stay where it is. I believe that people buy in Los Altos for it's kind of sort of rural, not according to Texas, but it is more rural than, say, you know, Oakland.
Okay. So when you, when, just for the audience, when you're talking about R1, could you explain what you mean?
That would be, I would say, it's probably like 90% of Los Altos. So the all the residential streets, say, Covington, Parma, Los Niños, Gablin, not so much Gablin, but Marvin, St. Francis, those are all R1, which is basically, most of them are about 10,000 square feet, 9,000 to 10,000. There are bigger lots, if it's over a half an acre, if it's more than 120 wide, then it can be subdivided, not flagwatt-wise, but it can be subdivided. But I don't think there should be any changes to that. So in other words, I don't think a 10,000 square foot lot should be divided into 5,000 square feet unless the whole entire community or at least 70% of the community agrees.
And those are single-family neighborhoods?
Those are all single-family neighborhoods.
Okay. Okay, well, let's move then to a question about Sacramento legislation. What is your position pro or con with respect to Senate housing bills SB 1120 and SB 902?
I believe there's a conflict of interest. I believe that the local government should not have to change their whole look for rules that haven't real, that the rules in Sacramento haven't really taken each town into account. They basically make a blanket ruling, and they just say, this is what you need to do. We don't care about you. And I don't think either one of them should be passed.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to our first hot topic. It's a hot topic here in Los Altos, and it's a hot topic nationwide. Are you in favor of defunding?
No.
Los Altos Police Department?
Absolutely not.
Can you?
Let me tell you what I know about Los Altos Police Department. I have a lot of clients who have workers who work in Los Altos. They know, as long as they follow the rules, nobody's going to bother them. Los Altos Police are very good to my workers. I have a lot of workers that, some of them are, you know, they're all documented, but some of them are not quite citizens yet. They're working hard that, that way, and they don't always have the nicest looking cars, but they do know to follow the rules. I'm very conscious of many people coming through our town through Waze, Foothill College, De Anza College, working for people, and they do not follow the rules. And if they don't follow the rules, it's not my fault the police stopped them. I've never experienced, you know, I've experienced sexism my whole life, but I've never experienced racism, and yeah, okay, I'm white, but, you know, not all the policemen are white. So I'm a firm believer in finding out why the stats are a little bit swayed towards people that aren't white being stopped, but I already know why they're not being stopped. I mean, I see them all the time, blowing through stop signs, blowing through stoplights, speeding down Questa. I mean, people pass me on a double yellow. Like, why? I'm going 25. I'm not going to go any faster. So, sorry, that's just how I feel.
Okay, thank you.
Next hot topic, BLM.
Let's move to resident focus. How would you find a resident-friendly candidate?
How would I define a resident-friendly candidate? A candidate that's willing to listen to the residents. And a lot of, I would say, 10% of the residents do 90% of the conversations. So we need to be able to help the people who don't want to talk, who don't want to say who their name is, who don't want to put their face out on a limb, who want to just do their job, take care of their families, enjoy their backyard, and pay their taxes, and survive and flourish. We need to figure out how we can get those people to give me their advice. I've talked to probably six or seven pretty high rollers in the tech world, and they have all kinds of good ideas, but they don't want their name out there. They don't want to fill out a Form 700. They don't like anything about that. And they would love to help, but they don't want to, you know, have to go through the rigmarole that we have to go through. I'm used to 700s. I've been doing them for a long time. Big deal. You know, it is what it is. But there are a lot of people out there that would love to help.
So, Terri, just for the audience's sake, would you explain what a Form 700 is?
Form 700, basically, you have to fill out everything that is of financial interest in your family. You have to tell the public what property you own, what stocks you own, any kind of financial investments that you own. And a lot of these people don't want people to know their worth and their wealth. And, you know, it's out there. I mean, you know, I know how much some people, you know, you can look, if you did, you can look at financial statements, you know, of public offerings, et cetera. So, but I don't really care about that kind of stuff. What I care about is what, what people want you to have done for you. I mean, and I think there's people that are willing to help. They just don't want to be out in the limelight. It's hard being out in the limelight. You get shots every day.
Okay, thank you. So what will you do as an individual council member to keep current with the wants and needs of Los Altos voters?
So there, of course, there's the, all the communications that the council gets. There's, you can easily talk to the city manager one-on-one. You can have more than two council members talk because of the Brown Act, but there's, I do a lot of research. When I was on the planning department, I did a lot of research. I went and visited all kinds of places that were coming up on the council. There's many things that you can do to get yourself up to speed. I promised that I would never come to a council meeting not, not completely researched. I like learning. It's one of my kind of things. I should have been a detective, but too late for that. I'm too old. So, anyway, but there's lots of ways that you can become educated. You can talk to experts. You can talk to people in the community who, you know, are on top of certain technologies, et cetera. I have, if you, when my website finally up, if you look at all my clients that have talked, I go to the ends of the earth for my clients, and I intend to do that for the community.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to city government. Are you satisfied with the level of transparency within Los Altos city government? And if not, what would you do to improve it?
Correct. I looked at the chart. It's community first, it's city council next, and then down below is the government. I'm not sure that management at the city understands that the community is the client. I have that problem a lot in areas of my business. My clients are the client. So any person that I need to get research from, I just get it from my client. The community is the client. If I don't feel like I'm getting the proper information, I'm going to go and find out who I need to talk to to get it. I would like to have meetings with, you know, especially the finance people because I know we're going to be in trouble on borrowing money for the community center. So how are we going to pay that back? That's going to be important.
Okay. Would you please describe what you believe the proper relationship should be between our council and our city manager?
Our city manager is our employee, and our boss is the community. We're the go-between. So we should be very descriptive about what the city manager can do and what the city manager can't do. I know that he's got some understanding of things, but I think he should be doing more with the council's recommendation, especially the big things.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you know, you know, it depends on how, I'm very easy to get ahold of. Everybody knows that. So maybe people aren't as easy to get ahold of because they're working all the time. I don't really know. But all you got to do is pick up the phone. Pretty easy.
Okay. So, hot topics. What's your position regarding the use of city parks or city-sponsored art for political purposes?
If, you know, 90% of the community wants to have something changed, they need to tell us, and we can vote that in. I don't think there should be certain fractions that are allowed to dominate and take over public areas, parking lots, parks, et cetera. If the community at whole wants it, that's a different story, but it needs to go through the proper channels. In other words, you can't just go to the city manager and ask if you can have something done. It has to go through the proper channels. And it's pretty easy, you know, they've got a pretty good website going, and it just would be a matter of, I mean, my idea would be maybe get the town clerk to donate a very small section in their website where you could go on and see what's going on each, you know, each request. Maybe the town clerk donates us a little area because there's a lot of older people in Los Altos that look at the town clerk every week. There's, there's, I think people are more in tune to going to the council website than they were in the past because of the pandemic, but I think we have to do better at it. But I'm not in agreement that, you know, 10% of the citizenry can take over 10% of a park because that means 90% of the people can't use that.
Okay. What's your position regarding funding offers from private groups who want to alter a city park to facilitate a particular activity that they favor?
Again, if 90% of the community is okay with somebody leasing part of the parkland for something that everyone can use, I would be okay with it, but I would want to make sure that the community is okay with it. If there's, you know, 60% of the people don't want something, you're not going to vote it in. It's just not going to happen.
Okay. Does it make any difference if their offer to fund it is full, a full funding or partial?
No, because again, you know, if, if, if only 10% of the community's going to use it, that's not fair to the 90% of the community who's not going to use it. It has to be at least a majority vote.
And how do you feel about conditions on such an offer?
Like?
Like they'll fund, they'll fund altering part of a city park, but there are conditions on their offer to fund it. What do you feel about funding offers?
Again, I, again, I go back to the community. If 90% of the community is okay with somebody, let's just say that somebody wants to build a pool somewhere, as long as they're going to take care of it, they're going to pay for it, they're going to lease the land, they're going to pay the city for the land, 90% of the community is thrilled about it, they're going to pay for the maintenance, they're going to pay for taking care of it, they're going to pay for the safety, they're going to pay for the insurance, great, as long as the community feels it's okay. But if the community doesn't want it.
How about if, if that were all true, but there was a condition?
Like you can only swim from three to four? No. No conditions.
No conditions, no conditions at all?
No, because it's taking, you're taking public property and you're sort of making it private. I'm not in favor of that. We don't have enough public property in Los Altos as it is.
Okay. The last question. How do you feel about the proposed REACH codes and the manner in which the Environmental Commission, the city staff, and the city council have moved this item along towards a scheduled vote next month?
Very disappointed. I am a big recycler. We take military showers at our house. We've always been careful of the environment. We have lots of trees on our property. We don't drive unless we need to. I think most people in Los Altos are like that. I would say probably 95% of my clients want a gas stove, and I'm very concerned about putting restrictions on private property rights. I feel like it's a slippery slope. I feel like me, myself, if, if, if it was me and I had an interest in something like that, I have to declare it, and I have to recuse myself. And I, I've never had to recuse myself on the planning department, but I've had to recuse myself more than once on the value hearings because I look at the schedule, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's my client. So then I have to recuse myself. So I feel like there not a lot of, at least, I would say, not total honesty has gone on on that, and I'm, and I am concerned about private property rights. That's the first thing people want to know is where can they, they want to get rid of that electric stove and they want a gas stove because our community is like 30% non-Caucasian, and they all cook big time. Like my neighbor next door, she has a cook that comes all the time, and there's no way she'd buy a house unless it had a gas stove. No way. So I know there's lots of people like that, and I'm concerned about it. There needs to be some kind of other arrangement. And, you know, the, as much as I could do research on it, it doesn't look like the community is 70% for it. It looked like the community, to me, as far as I could tell, was 70% against it. I can't vote for something where they're 70% against it.
Okay. Well, that's the end of our formal questions, Terri, and I just wanted to give you the opportunity to just have a final statement for the audience that will be watching your interview.
I appreciate the time that you all took today, and I'm looking forward to being part of the ruling base, listening to the community, and if not, then I'll figure out a different way to help back. I do a lot of volunteering, so I don't intend to go anywhere. I don't like to gulp.
All right. Well, we thank you so very much for taking this time out of your day to talk with us, and we very much enjoyed the interview with you, and it will be posted as soon as possible, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much, Terri.
Have a great afternoon.
You too. Bye-bye.
You guys are funny.
Can you leave, you should, you should?
I'm leaving.
Okay, thank you. All right. So is everybody, everybody can unmute?
She's funny, too. Nicely.
Yeah.
I think I should have made some faces.
She said what? She said what? What did you say? What did you say, Michelle?
I don't think I should have made so many. If I'm funny, right? I was joking, sorry. Sorry to join late, Freddie.
No, no problem. I'm glad I, you know, sometimes I.
I sat there for a minute and then I thought, oh, I bet she didn't see me. So I hung up and I redialed.
Oh, thank you. Sometimes I'm so focused that I don't see that off on the, in the left side, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Really, this was one I really wanted to see.
Well, good. So I hope you saw most of it. Oh, shoot.
I saw all of, almost all of it.